Start the board meeting now. It is at 6:30, 7:00 PM. I think we'll start with the presentation, Tracy Malloy project. If we could do that.
So I'll introduce it. So as the board knows, the school asked for children's money to have Tracy Malloy come. She's a former student here, a former resident, and now lives in New York City as an artist and does a lot of work with schools. So we had her come and work with our second and fourth grade on a couple of different projects. So I invited those teachers and some students to present what they'd done. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Watson first.
So Tracy came and worked with us the week before vacation. And what did we work on, guys?
We worked on these pillows. We drawed ourselves and put what we loved in the background. Then on the back, we drawed what we were scared of.
Why did we do these?
And...
Yeah, go ahead, say that. We've been working on character strengths with second grade. And one of the character strengths we've been working on is-
Is perseverance.
-bravery and perseverance. And so being able to overcome some of our fears. So they learned a lot about self-portraits. They actually stuffed the pillows also, so they went through the whole process. Tracy was awesome with giving directions and with the kids. It was such a great experience. So why not hold them up a little bit so everybody can see?
Oh, Tracy, yay! Oh my God, I love you so much!
So I don't think a fourth grader can make it today, but I can talk a little bit about it. Fourth graders, you want to come up for a sec? So you guys have been studying Greek mythology, correct?
Yes.
And so tell us a little bit about your project, and look at the camera.
Um...
This is Violet Small, by the way. Shay Callenan, and this is Jayden Miras.
We worked on creating either plates or faces of gods or goddesses. I picked Iris. I gave her teardrop earrings and eyes, sort of like Suns, which makes a rainbow, which she is goddess of. And I made her rainbow hair because of the rainbow. And since she is a messenger of Hera and Zeus, she connects them to humans, I gave her a barrette in her hair that is the shape of wings.
I did Aphrodite. And I gave her pink lipstick because she is the goddess of love.
I did Hercules because, um, he was brave and he wasn't really a goddess yet. And, um, he had to work to be a goddess. And, uh, his father is Zeus. And, uh, he foughted, um, the dragon. And he was very brave of doing that.
Kristen McGuire Jones just walked in. I don't know if you want to add anything to it. I kind of said a little bit, but you might explain it better.
So one of the fourth grade standards is to look at vocabulary, specifically vocabulary that has roots in mythology. And so we kind of thought, how are we going to do that? Tracy coming into the school seemed like a perfect opportunity. So we did a lot of background knowledge around, you know, exposure to myths. We read myths. We watched little video clips of different myths. The vocabulary words that the students had for the two weeks stemmed from mythology. So they had been introduced, but it wasn't really enough for them to actually cling to it and own it necessarily. And so I felt that Tracy provided a wonderful opportunity for the students. They're not going to forget these words. And so she really allowed them to take their understanding of the words to a higher level as well, especially as they started to think about symbols that represented the Greek god or the god or goddess that they were focusing on. So it was a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
You guys may bring those a little closer, because I can't see.
Can I have a few of the plates, too?
Yeah, go ahead. While she's doing that, I just wanted to thank Tracy. I know she's not here, but I want to thank her for her time here. She spent a whole week here with those four classes, two grade levels. And she's definitely interested in coming back for more with those grade levels. Maybe we can get it another time. They cooked them in my oven. They cooked it in that oven.
Thank you very much. Nice job.
And Tracy gave students the option of either creating a bust or a plate. So there were two plates that were created as well. So this student chose to do Hera, who had the peacock, as one of her symbols. And so she created this design to represent Hera. And then hygiene was one of our words. And we talked about the relation to hygia. And I thought this was particularly clever with, it's fallen apart a little bit, but with soap and teeth to represent various ways that we practice good hygiene and connect it to their lives. So those were two plates that were options. The rest are on display up there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Yes.
Questions?
Well, I just was noticing one girl's was unpainted. And I remember you saying that there would be opportunities to have, has anything come about with our art teacher to bring this forward?
They had conversations. Tracy had conversations even while she was here.
Just, she had an unpainted one?
Emily does a lot already. She does give the classroom teachers.
You said you would be extending the same opportunity throughout.
Yep.
Thank you. Good job.
Yeah, good job. Anybody else? Okay. Right into the citizens' comments. What I'd like to do, I'd like to change the format a little bit. I am going to address Mr. Foley's concerns. What I will first want to do is hear the comments. I don't want to get into too much dialogue, but I want everybody to be able to tell us their comments. And they will be answered by either me or the superintendent at this time. So I'll open it up. And yes, sir.
I'll go first, because I got to get out of here.
Okay, and state your name, please.
Glenn Matunis. Got "To whom it may concern, it's with great sadness that I feel I need to be here to make this correspondence tonight." It's been brought to my attention that there was an event at the Shasberry Elementary School involving inappropriate touching of a student by an adult parent or volunteer. After learning of the facts of the incident, I'm deeply troubled by the school's response regarding this matter. The parents of the child were not notified in a timeframe that could be considered okay by anybody with a heartbeat, nor was it ever reported to the DCF by any school official in a timely manner. DCF reporting is more than an obvious case of neglect or abuse. If there are many small incident events that report over time about the same individual, the patterns of behavior can be used to identify a potential predator that most likely knows how to operate within the system, within the law. What the heck is the principal thinking? I have read the Vermont State statute regarding the subject, and it was clearly violated by the school and its representatives. I have serious concern regarding the principal's handling of this matter, to the point I wonder if my child is secure under his supervision. The next few years of my child's time at this school will be uncomfortable for me as a parent. I have no reasonable expectation that the safety and well-being of the children in this school is the number-one priority. It seems the concern was for the protection of the identity of the adult. I wonder how the principal would feel if it was his daughter and no call was made to DCF. I wonder if the grown male adult has interaction with his child, if the outcome would have been any different. I suspect it wouldn't be. Reporting an incident to DCF is not a conviction of anybody, just a tool to see if further investigation is needed, or if there are other incidents of this type involving the same individual that may lead to further investigation. Jeff Johnson decided the law didn't apply to him or had no understanding of it. Failure to report is failure to the student and the parents. You have lost my trust and respect. Please resign. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes. My name is Maureen Gardner, and I have a child in sixth grade. And I've worked in different, at Molly Stark in the school system for several years as a para educator. I ran my own registered childcare for eight years in my home. My oldest daughter is 29. She went through this school. My youngest, as I said, is 12. I have grandchildren that will be going through this school. And I have nothing but great respect for our principal. I think he's a wonderful administrator. I work here as a sub. I am here regularly in and out of this school. I do not feel unsafe, nor do I feel like my grandchildren are unsafe here. My understanding is that this incident happened during GISP. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, GISP is not a school function. GISP is when the children leave here after GISP, they are no longer under the jurisdiction of the school. I have a child in GISP, and I question why the GISP drivers and the GISP instructors do not have a background check. And what I was told is because when the children leave here, they become the responsibility of the parent. It's the parent's responsibility to make sure their child is safe, to make sure their child gets to and from GISP with people that they trust. That's why I chose to drive, because I wanted to make sure that my child was with someone I knew. It's almost to me like if my 12-year-old son spent the night at a friend's house, and he came home and didn't tell me something happened, but he told a friend of a parent, and the friend of the parent came to Jeff and told Jeff. That's not Jeff's responsibility at that moment, because that was an incident that happened outside of the school's responsibility and authority. That parent that was told had the responsibility to come to me and tell me. Now, if we wanted to go to Jeff and say, "Look, we don't know what to do. Could you guide us? Could you help us? Could you tell us?" But that was not Jeff's responsibility. Furthermore, I have been a therapeutic foster care for the state of Vermont. I had children living in my home. I work as the executive director of a Pregnancy Resource Center, and I am a mandated reporter as well. And I have to face issues every single day about making reports. It's not as easy as so many people think. There are a lot of factors that go into it. Maybe it was mishandled. I don't know. But what I do know is that I would like the person in this room that is perfect to stand up and say they've never mishandled a situation. Is there a person in this room right now that could say, "You have never mishandled, misjudged, made a mistake"? Because I want to talk to you, and I want to get your autograph. I want to know you, because you will be the only person I have ever met that has not made a mistake. This administration of this school, it's a thankless job. He's the PTO because there's not enough parents that will come in? This should be the best night of his life, when he gets together for a board meeting with parents. It should be a night of encouragement. It should be a night of support. It should be a night of, "Okay, we have concerns." This is a nightmare, because I've gone back and watched a lot of the board meetings. And I'm surprised he's still sitting here. I'm going to tell you right now. If you get rid of Jeff and want his resignation, do you think or are you convinced that the next person that comes in will be any better? This is almost like a marriage. You hired him. We hired him. And now because there's a few issues, we need to work them out, not throw him out and think we're going to get another person. That's the difference between someone that has a Gardner mentality, excuse me, that's what my last name is, but you don't have to think like me, but someone that's willing to say, "How can I nurture? How can I help? How can I come alongside someone?" versus a shopper mentality that says, "You're not working out. Let's throw you out and get someone else." Well, the next person you get probably you aren't going to like any more than you like Jeff. So my advice and thought, and what I will do, is say, "I want to come alongside the principal of Shasberry Elementary School and say, 'How am I going to help make this school be the best that it can possibly be?'" I'm not going to complain, because I'm going to, there, yes, every school has issues. I have a child, a grandchild attends Bennington Elementary. Every school has issues. How can we work together to make this better? How can we come alongside the administration? Jeff has an open-door policy. I have never, ever seen him be like, "No, no time to talk." I have walked in his office on a number of occasions and said, "Hey, do you have a minute? Yep, no problem. Let's talk." Now, am I minimizing the situation? No. I'm not. I'm not saying that was okay. But what I am saying is let's all be accountable. Let's all work together. Let's stop pointing blame at one individual and say, "Let's come together and work together." I'm invested in this school, because this is my youngest grandson, and he'll be here in a few years. And I hope and pray that Jeff Johnson is the administrator when he arrives in five years. That's what I have to say about that. And again, if there's anyone in this room that does want to tell me that they've never made a mistake, never misjudged something even regarding their own child, you know I've made so many mistakes with my child, children, raising them? We all have. We all have. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you.
I would like to say so. Okay. My name is Paul McGann, and I'm a resident here. I have a daughter here in the sixth grade. And I was at the last meeting. And I'm a police officer by trade. I've been a police officer for over 30 years. I'm also a town constable. And the one thing that I think we need to know is what the statute says. I've heard an awful lot of what everyone thinks the statute says, but I've not heard anyone say, "This isn't the statute." So it's Title 33, BSA 4913, talks about mandated report. I've taken reports where something happens in somebody's house. I've had teachers come to me and make reports that it didn't happen in the school. And there's a reason why. The statute is clear as to who is a mandated reporter and why.
I'm a mandated reporter.
We are, we are.
We all are.
We are, we all are, right. But it doesn't mean because it didn't happen in school doesn't mean-
That's not what I'm saying.
That's what I took, so I just wanted to make sure I got that straight.
And that is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is it's not just his responsibility.
Excuse me, excuse me. I don't want to get into this dialogue. I want to give everybody that wants to-
First off, the incident happened in the school. That's the point.
All I want to do is, we have a point of order.
Yeah, right. But just so that stops.
We have a point of order. I know. Let this gentleman finish, and we can continue.
What I'm asking is this, that the board have a copy of this statute and not go what you think it is, but have it and take a look at it. I'm not here to overthrow a principal. I'm here to make sure that we take action on what we need to do by statute. I've heard protocol. I'm saying the statute is clear. We don't need protocol. We're mandated reporters. And if you get on the website of DCF, it will tell you, "Hey, in doubt, report." That's all we're asking you to do, is report. All right, so I'm going to leave this with Jeff. And I thank you for your time, and I want to hear what happens.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay. I have a statement, but it's simply that the matter occurred in the school. A child came forward and said she felt uncomfortable because she was touched. An investigation took place in writing. I've been told, "Don't worry, we did an investigation. We found out there was no reason for us to call DCF," when meanwhile, our policy, 5005, says that it is in no way, shape, or form, it is further, not the, it is the policy, it is further the purpose of this policy to make clear to school district employees, it is not their role to be an investigative judge or jury in cases of suspected abuse and neglect, rather it is their role to call. Now, if there would have been a phone call made, any reasonable person would expect, if it happens in the school, which this did, that a child comes forward to someone they look up to, like a principal, a para, a teacher, a mandated reporter. The point of this is so that the mandated reporter is mandated to report an incident like this. They're not mandated to do an investigation. This happened four months ago. We have a policy here. It's been here since 2001. Says you do not do an investigation because it involves bias, because people like other people. People don't want to believe there could be a problem. People don't want to suspect there's a problem. So they give this to DCF because they have an objective viewpoint. They do investigations. That's just what they do. And most of the time, it gets rejected. And that's fine. That's what we want to hear. But they've got to be informed, because next year, these children are moving forward, and they're going through this supervisory union. And you can't just say, "Oh, by the way, we did an investigation. We found out there was an incident. We didn't say it then, but I'm going to make an email to the principal to keep his eye on things." That's why DCF is involved in these cases. I don't want to get, again, this is subjectivity. When you say things are great, that we love him, that's, again, not helpful. He's a mandated reporter. This is above all of anything we can talk about. That's a responsibility. I am not a mandated reporter. An incident happened at GISP, I may or may not be here, but this incident happened in the school, in the hallway. My daughter had enough courage to come forward and say she did not feel comfortable. She felt weird. This is all I'm saying. This is not, we're not here to cheerlead. We're here to get this straight so it doesn't happen again. And so far, it's been four months. And I'm waiting for this board, the superintendent or the principal, to take some responsibility and say, "Don't worry. We understand there was a problem. We're going to work on it." But instead, we've heard, look at last week, read the banner, it says, "It's a living document. This policy is confusing. It's a gray, it's got a lot of gray area." We don't want to hear that when some people's kids are involved. We want to hear, "Don't worry. We're on it. We're going to take responsibility for this. It happened in the school." That's why I'm here. That's why there's a lot of people here. And anything else is subjectivity. The fact that a child comes forward, she expects help. She doesn't expect to be investigated. Maybe you're lying, maybe you're not. That's introducing subjectivity. The whole point of mandated reporter is you don't introduce subjectivity. That's why you get someone else to look at it, and guess what? Thank God, it was, they screened it out. It's been, it's been, it's been screened out, and they figured it out that it's not something they're going to follow up on. That hasn't ever happened. That still hasn't happened. And when kids hear that, they're not going to come forward again. They've basically been told, "Did it happen? Was it an accident? Or do you think it, it was weird?" These are quotes, "It was weird." Now, you guys, put everybody in this room, put your children in that position. Honestly, not subject, see, be honest with yourselves and say, "I probably wouldn't want a phone call." I get phone calls when kids are having a late birthday party schedule or a baseball game that gets put off for a half hour. Baseball, there's no phone call made. So as much as everybody wants to clap, I don't want to clap. I've got to deal with things. Other parents have to deal with things. I'm not related to Jeff.
So are you-
I'm not, I'm not employed by Jeff.
I don't want it, please. I don't want to-
So that's what I'm saying. No, that's what I mean. I'm saying I'm not. That's the truth. I'm not. But when people get up and say these things, it confuses things more.
You got to address the board. I get that, but I don't want this, this is not going to get out of control.
I don't think it is. I just want to be clear and say where we stand.
I understand, but-
And then it's been four months ago.
I'm being addressed.
It's been four months ago.
Right. Okay, what I want to do, I'll end the dialogue right now. Billy, go ahead, and then I have, I'm going to make sure that we address your concern too.
All right, I'll be quick. I'll hand you documents unless you respond next month. All right, so in response to the dialogue last month about fundraising policy 5200, I know we've made a few minor changes here in the last two days, but here's a little documentation showing that we were not following that policy. In response to comments about bullying in the school, here's some examples of three specific incidents where the school did not follow the bullying policy in place in that request. I'm asking you to ask Superintendent Colkeen to report, to appoint a third person that kids can report bullying to, because they have been failed by the reporters that we currently have. And in my final document, I would just like the board to consider in the reporting issue, it seems like you're taking a lot of guidance from Mr. Colkeen, and I understand where you're coming from on that. But I'd like you to just consider the fact that Mr. Colkeen, in a job, two jobs ago, was under some accusations of harassment, which were never investigated because he resigned before that came to fruition. Now, we don't know if that happened. It doesn't matter if it happened. But being subject of, to accusations that a student said he was harassed, it could potentially create a bias as to how he would look at accusations coming from a student. So I would ask the board to seek outside guidance in regards to how this situation should be handled. Thank you.
All right. All right, my next, I told Mike that I would respond. I'm sorry, go ahead. Mike? Okay. Michael Biddy, I have, I'd like to address what I consider the board of directors of Shasberry Elementary School. I think it's your responsibility to do your job and to be the representative of the children and the citizens of our community. I think you should ask for the principal's resignation. If he won't give it to you, I think you should demand it. Thank you. Okay, what I'm going to do, Mike, I told you I would respond to you tonight. I'm going to. I think the, I'm going to apologize to you, because things were done in a timely manner. I think a mistake was made. I don't know how dramatic that was, but the board isn't pervy to some of these things, because it's not the board's job to get involved unless we have to. That's why we hire a superintendent. That's why we have a principal. But the board's job, and I've told you before, me as chair, I set the agenda, I run the meetings. And that's, and you're only a board member when we sit and we convene at this table. I apologize. You've had somewhat of an inconvenience and maybe a hardship because of the things that went on with your daughter. That's unfortunate. I just, I don't know what more I can say to that. The board is checking in. I mean, we're having the superintendent make sure that there's things in place. He has mentioned the training. Everybody make sure that they're mandated reporters, whatever that training may be. I don't know. Boards really don't get involved in that. That's the administration. So I hope you accept our apology. I don't know if it does any good. Maybe it doesn't. We're, there is a person sitting at this table that isn't concerned about all the kids, yours included. I think that over the years, this board has made sure all students are safe, and I'm sure the teachers do. It's not something that you take lightly at all. I still got grandkids going to be coming through here, I hope. And it's, I just think it's unfortunate what happened, what has transpired. It's happened for whatever may, I believe Jeff has said he was sorry, but I don't know what more we could do for you, other than we will make sure it's, hopefully, nothing like this happens again.
Right, I know. And I understand that there's been an apology made, and that's not why I'm here. I've accepted that.
I know.
But what I don't like is when the superintendent says that this policy that we have had in place since 2001, at the, at the last meeting said, and it was reported in the banner, said that it's a living document, which leaves room for this to happen again and over again. And yet, the document he's referring to couldn't be more obvious than it says. The school and district employees are not supposed to be investigators.
Right.
Yet, Mr. Colkeen said that Jeff did an investigation, and everything seems okay.
Okay.
He shouldn't be doing an investigation. That is my only point.
Okay.
And we don't want that to happen anymore. We want someone to feel free to pick up a call, pick up the phone, and call DCF and say, and guess what? DCF might say, they might laugh and say-
I'm going to read you a letter that you got today, and I just received it. It says, "Dear Mr. Foley, I also appreciate the conversation the other day, which allowed me to better understand your position and wishes going forward. Along with you, DCF also puts great value on child safety. This is at the forefront of our work. As you are aware, there is some personal judgment involved in, with regard to reporting incidents of child abuse and neglect, but DCF always advises our mandated reporters, when in doubt, report." Just what you said. "I have reached out to the school directly and would offer the following. Number one, to work with them to bring an in-person training to the staff, which I Number one, to work with them to bring an in-person training to the staff which I would deliver personally. Number two, that I or one of my supervisors would be available to consult on cases that seem to fall in the gray area. Number three, I am also available to the SVSU to work with them around any policy revision to ensure that it aligns with statute if they would like. I am confident that most of us in the profession for a long time do this work because we care about children. I am happy to work together to ensure that going forward, reports get made in accordance with the law." And that's Beth Salwell. So you have that, so I want to make-
Then we will work with-
Yes, and administration will work with. So I, I hope that-
Right, so are we accepting then that something went wrong? Are we willing to say-
I think we've said that-
No, I don't, I'm not asking, I'm asking the superintendent. Are we willing to say that we are working towards something because you're not comfortable the way it went?
I think there's always room for improvement.
Yeah, see, that's what we've been getting. Well, don't worry. But no one's willing to accept the fact that it went wrong, you didn't follow the policy, and that's the end of it. I'm done after that.
I think there's multiple views on that.
See, there we go. There's a lot of gray area, there's a lot of views. If your kids are involved and you look at mandated reporter laws, it says, you do not do investigations. You call DCF. And right now, we're getting, don't worry, there's a lot of views.
Right, we can't debate it anymore, Mike. I get, we get where you're coming from. But I think, moving forward, we're going to work with DCF, and I think that should satisfy everyone.
And when is that going to happen? When's the time when they are going to come in to be, to train again?
We've scheduled them to come the 13th if we decide there's not going to be a stupid day.
All right, thank you. There you go. You've got schedules to be trained again.
There you go. All right.
That helps.
Okay, all right. Now, I want, all right, all right, I'm all set with you, I hope. I want to address Billy Obenauer. This is on the open meeting law that you suggested. Okay. "The board understands that under the open meeting law, there are currently 10 general reasons that can justify entering executive session during a board meeting. The board also understands that a motion to enter executive session should contain adequate information to allow the public to know which specific reason it is claiming as the basis for entering executive session. The superintendent has asked our legal counsel to prepare an easily understandable summary of the reasons for entering executive session that the board will be able to refer to during meetings. We hope to have this in the near future and will be glad to share with the public. Regarding the board's motion to enter executive session for personnel reasons, at its meeting on February 10th, 2016, the specific purpose was to receive information concerning alleged actions of a district employee for the purpose of evaluating the appropriateness of such actions. It is permissible under 1 VSA Section 313A 3 for the board to enter executive session for the purpose of evaluating the performance of one of its employees. For this reason, the board's use of executive session on February 10th was lawful, but its stated reason for entering executive session was too brief. Instead of simply stating personnel reason, it should have been clear that the reason was for evaluation of an employee." And as you can see on this agenda, we have that. So people know exactly what we're doing. And I get that, and I can tell you, with all the boards, MAU, SVSU, CDC, we're going to tighten up the ship. And it's been a little lax, that's fine. But I think you'll know, it's in the next two or three months, things are going to change, and we will tighten the ship up, and I think it should satisfy everybody. So-
Fran, that response is everything I could ask for on that? Thank you.
Okay.
May I ask one question as a follow-up to the discussion that you just had? Under what circumstances, since I'm still not getting a clear sign from the superintendent as to how he feels about this other situation, under what circumstances, hypothetically speaking, forget about what happened in the past, moving forward, would a person in the school mandated reporter not have reasonable suspicion that something took place but spend hours conducting an investigation?
I don't really understand your question, Bill. You're asking me to speculate on a future situation.
Well, I'm just saying, if you didn't have reasonable suspicion on something in the future, would you still conduct an investigation? Because what we've heard about what happened in the past is that there was no reasonable suspicion, but-
I think we've all learned from this. I think we've all reviewed the policy, which doesn't always happen. I think we're going to up the training which all staff, including principals, receive. And that's going to be S U wide, not just Shasberry.
So are you backing off your statement from last month that the-
That's all I have to say, Bill.
All right. All right, we're going to move on, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just before we do-
Sure.
Because I, I think that some members of the public may still be wondering how the board feels about the issue of 5005, the policy, and whether it is followed. These minutes haven't been approved, we're going to be approving them later, but Jim, you are quoted here as saying that the board administration will review the policy. And I'm not sure whether you meant this board. I know that the-
Yes, yes.
The policy committee is looking at it. I'll just say from my own perspective that as a, as a layperson, as someone who wasn't at all involved with the situation, if I were looking at the policy and then were brought up to speed on what I understand took place, that I would say the policy wasn't followed to the letter. Now, it may be that the policy as written isn't, can't be followed to the letter. And I think that's something that we need to pay closer attention to.
Yeah, well, I'd also, Dave, had talked to Mike about that policy, 5005, because that's for neglect and abuse. And I had a talk with one of the policy committee members, Richard France. He says it really, that policy really doesn't apply for this incident, but that's the only policy that we have, so. And I'm thinking that they'll probably look into a different policy or maybe a different addition, or I don't know.
Okay, yeah, my reading of the policy was that it would apply in the situation, but that was just my-
Well, that's why I asked about that. When I read it, I said, well, I'll ask one of the people at the meeting. So anyway, okay.
Fran?
Yes.
In, in listening to the community come forth and bring us issues that are their issues, and hearing tonight, firm, strong, cheerleading for the principal, I'm sorry, I can't think of a better word.
Okay.
You said something that I realize as a board member, I can't act on my own, but as a board consensus, I'm concerned that you said, we don't run the school. That is true. But our job as a board is to see that it's run well.
That's right.
These people have taken the time to come out. There are two sides of every story. But as a board, I'm concerned that we may not be all in unit, united in how this is happening. And I'm, we have two jobs, the safety and well-being of children and adequate yearly educating them, and value for investment for those that we serve. That's our elected obligation. I don't know, I've been here only a year. We've had months and months of people bringing us concern. As a board, are we satisfied that we are seeing that the school is run well? That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other member? I bet.
You know, we do have a new act this year started in the school. It's Act One Training for People. You know, one thing we're talking about, the policy goes back to 2001. Act One wasn't even mandated then. You know, it was started recently, as of November, I think, 2012, we started putting it along. So we have this new program that has not been addressed by the policy committee yet, which I think we have to figure out how this Act One Training, which is supposed to go to the teachers and the parents and the community, is being implemented for policies. And it's one thing that we haven't heard yet. So I mean, I think-
Maybe that should be brought to the top of the list.
It should be brought to the top of the list because it is a new policy. It provides prevention, fractures, and opportunities to work together to support understanding information and comprehensive sexual prevention in the school communities. This is what we're talking about. This is Act One. I mean, when you had the Act One Training meeting here for the community members, there's only about 20 of us here. So I mean, this is something that, this is that part of the moving document. It has changed. You know, nobody's talked about this. So I think we need to make sure this is addressed with the policy committee as well.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
Okay, I want to respond to that because frankly, we still haven't, I know Jeff just looked right at me and said that's part of the living document. So I would do want to say that the policy we do have currently and that we're supposed to be following, under the definition of suspected, it means any doubt, any, the definition of suspected says, "Any doubts an employee may have will be resolved in favor of reporting any suspicion. Further, the employee shall not refrain from making a report for any reason, no matter how well-intentioned." I look at that as, when in doubt, you call. I wouldn't be here right now if that had happened. Instead of, let's figure it out, let's see what happened for an hour and a half, where the child is then put in a position where she said, well, maybe nothing happened after all, and then we don't get a call, DCF doesn't get a call, and who knows what happens the next day. So this is a policy we have. This is in writing. This is not in flux or in transit or on its way to something else. It's something that we should have been following since 2001. And as a parent, looking at this information that we have, I'm not privy to any new information, but as of tomorrow, when school opens, this happens again, you could be here in another week saying, well, we're still looking at Act One Training, and this is going to have to go, because we're going to put it on the top of the list. But as of right now, you are not following five, your own policy, which is SVSU 5005. Look at it, as a parent, anyone here with a kid would, would say the same thing, I would imagine.
Well, there, that is, I know you don't want to hear this, and we are going to be more aggressive in looking into that with Act One, and I've already talked to the policy committee, so we will, I think we can work something out where it will be the correct thing to do.
And I would say just call. That would be favorable for me-
Yeah, and I'm sure-
Admit that you should just call.
Yeah.
Because guess what? People get on the phone and they might laugh. Maybe DCF will say, you know what? You don't have to call.
Right.
But it's done.
All right.
There's no question anymore.
Okay.
There shouldn't, no one should be out here complaining about a situation like this when DCF is nothing but clear about, when in doubt, report.
Yeah.
That's all. That should have been done.
And we will, okay, that's what we're going to do. And I, yes, Barry.
Is there an opportunity later? I don't want to interrupt this train of thought, but for public comments, or why should I make a comment?
Actually, I'm doing public comments, that's it. Because we got to, we got to open the idea.
I just have a question then.
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
Someone earlier said that there, for some reason, there doesn't seem to be a lot of PTO involvement in this school. And I wonder if there's, I don't know, but-
I don't know that, but I mean, I'm not in the school a lot. I mean, if there's-
Does anybody, I mean, does anybody have any idea why that is? I mean, some school districts, you know, PTOs are active and really busy and communicate with the board.
Yeah, as far as I know, there, is there anybody here from the PTO? So, I, I'll ask you, is it Act number-
I can speak to, well, my daughter needs kindergarten. There was one, pretty much a one-woman standing PTO, Brandy Portes, and she did everything. And we came in and she almost, she just couldn't believe the amount of people that came to the meeting. She, it was just shocking. She thought there was another meeting going on because of the amount of cars in the parking lot. And she was just, she was her last year, and she taught us everything she could, and there was a ton of us. And then it got to be less and less people, and it became, for me, myself, I started to work on my masters, and it just, it was kind of like a five-woman show, and it just, it just got exhausting.
So what I'm hearing is it's active?
It is active. You're in it. Yeah, Stacy's in it. Emily Umflitz is in it, and I'm still in it. I just don't attend all the meetings, but I still-
Well, that's basically what I wanted to know.
Jay's, that's big.
Okay. And, you know, I'm sorry, I want to cut this short. I mean, we really got a lot, a lot of stuff to do, and I wanted to make sure we took care of a couple of issues. We've done that. Hopefully, there'll be some follow-up on that at a later date. I want to head right now for the Huzick River Hydro presentation.
All right, so for those of you who don't know me, my name's Bill Scully. I live down in North Bennington. We just got through redeveloping the Vermont Tissue Plant. It was only started as a way to affect change in Vermont energy policy and actually has done a lot to changing Vermont energy policy and trying to get some of the 1,250 dams that are unused in the state reactivated. So what we're doing now is we're redeveloping the panel site, and we've been talking to all these big companies with big meters, $2 million meters, about net metering. And one thing you should know is that in net metering, the maximum size you could be is 500 kilowatt.
I'm sorry, could maybe stand the opposite way. So I got some, I see some people trying to listen to what you're saying, so I'm sorry.
No, no problem. So one of the things is that in net, in net metering in Vermont, one of the, the biggest size you can be is 500 kilowatt, which is effectively the power, the horsepower, and that's actually, kilowatt is actually a direct correlation to horsepower. Then you have what most people would refer to as the distance traveled, or how much power do you create? The big diversion between solar and hydro is that solar, you run on 4.2 peak hours a day or 4.6, and hydro is 24 hours a day. So effectively, we make about seven times more power off the same-sized plant than, than a solar plant. So we have a great deal of value for really large meters because we generate so much more power, and there can only be one, one source meter. But then I was in a conversation when I was down in panel with Mrs. Brownell, who's on the panel board, and she said, you know, you're, we were talking about how we get classes through Vermont Tissue all the time, and she said, why aren't you talking to all the schools? And I took a step back and realized, well, that's an awfully good question. Why am I not talking to the schools? So I began to talk with the supervisory union. We realized that the size was actually very appropriate, that if we put all the schools together, and we're talking to one college too, that will likely be involved. We actually have a perfect-sized group, and we have, aside from savings that we can afford to the school, we also have this nice connection to actually part of our past being, you know, kind of reemerging. I've already talked with a couple of different teachers. I'm actually teaching a class at Bennington College next term, and in discussion with Katie Schonbeck, we're going to be bringing her math class down there to do some real actual experiments with mathematics, some really tangible things. To explain very briefly what we're proposing here, we are a source meter. So our meter is running backwards the whole time, generating power. We then need use meters to use up all of the kilowatt-hour credits that we're using. So the school's utility provider won't change, it will still be Green Mountain Power, but we then will be applying a credit to the school's bill. And then we ask the school then to pay us 95% of that credit. So effectively, getting very close to a 5% savings. It will never match 5 because it's 5% of what we're applying, and what we're applying will be close to 100%, but not always match 100%. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. And again, it's the panel hydroelectric plant that we are, at the old panel Tannery Dam, that we are redeveloping. And we're doing a lot of other things too. We're cleaning up PCBs from the waterway and things like that. But all kinds of stuff like that. Does, do you have any questions about it or anything like that?
Members? I've asked my questions in other meetings, so...
Okay. Yeah, I've been doing this for about a month now.
And Bill, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was at the MAU meeting, so you answered some of my questions there. I'm curious whether anybody knows, whether we've quantified what the savings, dollar savings would be for the Shasberry District to participate in.
I don't have the actual dollars. If you have, probably, because I probably have a number on your annual use, but it could be about 5% of your annual use. It's a matter of whether or not I've got that written down here, which I don't. It'd be 5% of 34,000. Am I going to do that like that? Or...
Well, that's a good ballpark. Okay, thank you.
You said, you said that was just for the panel dam you're working in?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we actually did the same thing with, with Vermont Tissue, but that group, that was commissioned last September, and that's a different group, of another group of local businesses, and the town of Bennington.
And just so that I'm clear, too, and I know I asked this question earlier, but entering into the agreement that we're looking at here, which I think is a 10-year agreement, would preclude us from also simultaneously entering into the sort of net metering, solar agreement that we had contemplated and actually approved last fall, that all the districts, or most of the districts, not, not ours, I guess, come to think of it. We discussed it and then decided not to, but in any case, it would preclude us from entering an agreement like that in the future?
That's correct. And that is correct because the way the legislation is currently written, there can only, there can be a lot of use meters, but there can only be one source meter. The Public Service Board is actually, actually soliciting comments on that right now, but I have a feeling that that getting approved is a little ways down, down the road. It opens up a really big Pandora's Box. I mean, it, suddenly, who's in charge of the group? Right now, it's me who's in charge of the group, so we work with the meters to max, you know, we work with all the members to maximize the savings. But then who becomes in charge? Is it one of the use meters, or which one of the source meters is allocating credits? It gets a little bit sticky, and there could be conflicting goals involved, which is where things, it could become contentious, and then who manages that? Green Mountain Power isn't going to be interested, so do you involve the Public Service Board? So possible, but I don't see it happening in the, in the near future. I'll say that, though, it's per meter. So if you had two meters, one could be in each, in each group. It's by the meter.
Larry, I know you have a question, but I, I wanted to keep public comments closed. Is it, can it be real quick? It's the last, it's going to be the last one.
I have one after.
All right, you're a little bored, that's fine, because the meeting's between us.
You know, you talked about education opportunities for kids. You know, do you provide opportunities to come into school and talk about, with the open field trips?
I'm going to leave that up to the schools.
Okay. But would you have an opportunity to do something? Like if a teacher came up and said, I want to talk about how solar projects work? You know, would you be able to walk the kids through it and do the field trips? Yeah, I think, yeah, and it depends on the class. Like right now, the, the Villa School in North Bennington is actually planning a field trip to come down because they want to see it, because they want to know how the lights come on. So it's kind of a cool thing for them to come and see, and I just need like 80 parents there. But I'm going to leave that up to the educators to figure out what the best, how that comes together. For Katie, it may be that I come to the class, and we actually start to do some math on the board. So it just, it depends, and I don't, definitely not my field, so I'll provide the, the information, but not necessarily frame it.
Okay. And I want to say also, I, I think what convinced me of this, rather than the solar thing, nobody, the ratepayers don't pay any of this.
No, this is all...
That's the nice thing.
Right.
So it's not like there's hidden, hidden costs or something. But you did a thing with the 22% of the dime or something, so that was interesting.
What was that?
22% of 10 cents.
Right. Well, it gets into like, especially with the fact that we generate so much, and this is more specific with larger meters, but where you were getting solar, saying they would give you 22% back.
Right.
But they're only generating 1/7th the power, so do you want 22% of a dime or 5% of a dollar?
Thank you.
Is roughly what we're talking about.
Okay. That's what you, yeah, thank you. Any other board member? Okay. We got to have a...
Bill has the motion, and I know it altered from what I received.
If I can remember off the top of my head, I think we're looking for a motion from the board to allow the chair to enter into a contract with Housick River Hydro for a 10-year period to receive credits from the panel Tannery Hydroelectric Facility and receive a 5% savings on any credits that are allocated to the school.
And if we want to get out of that contract, we have to tell you in year eight?
We want to know by year eight, yes. And, and just so you know, there's another stipulation that doesn't exist for MAU. MAU constitutes more than half of this group. If MAU opted out at year eight, and Shasberry wanted to stay in, Housick River Hydro then wants one year to try to replace that meter, which we can certainly do, but if after a year we couldn't, it actually wouldn't benefit Shasberry to stay in, we'd be generating more power than you could ever use, and we wouldn't have anything to do with it. So at that point, we'd want a year to try to, to try to fill that void.
Okay.
And the contract is still with our attorney being reviewed, so it's not ready for anybody to sign yet anyway, so...
And is the, is the expectation that this would kick in, in the next fiscal year?
April, we, we should start commissioning the second week of March 2017 and generating credits right around, and fully commissioned by April 1st, which would mean the first credits would probably roll in. We have to figure out the billing because it all needs to be, it all needs to be the same date, but right after the 1st of April, there should be some credits applying.
Okay. I'll second it. Is that moved? Okay. All in favor of the motion? All right? Unanimous.
Wow. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, move to financial? Oh, no, wait a minute. Superintendent's report, I'm sorry. Almost skipped right over you.
Two items. There's been a request for, that we consider making the last day of school for students on Friday, June 10th, as opposed to Monday, June 13th, that the staff would still report on, on Monday, June 13th, but bringing the students, the feeling is bringing the students back for a Monday is of questionable educational value. All boards are going to have to agree to this, just, if you agree to it, it still has to go through, I haven't been to panel yet, and MAU, but MAU, that last day of school, very few students, in any ways, that's a makeup day for MAU, so they don't run the buses for the high school that day. So if someone wants to opt out, and they want their students in school on 13th, and it will remain the 13th, but I'm asking this board to consider, Bennington and Woodford have already agreed to end it on the 10th. Question comes up, are we in compliance with state requirements? Yes, that would mean that our students were in school for 179 days. They're required to go 175, so we're scheduled for 180. So I ask the board to consider that.
Do you suggest Jeff, whether he has any thoughts on it?
Oh, I agree. Jim, back on a Monday for the last day of school's not beneficial for our students or our teachers for that matter, and it gives us a head start in next year with the teachers in the building.
Only because we didn't use any snow days this year, because if we had used snow days, it would have put us on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then we wouldn't have considered it, but bringing for one day, I don't see the value of doing it.
So, somebody going to make the motion?
I'll make the motion, too.
Jeff made the motion, Ed seconded it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Unanimous.
Just want to caution you that, you know, the public shouldn't think that this is a done deal yet, still, I got to go through some meetings next week to see how that is. The other, and I know Jeff will probably give a full report on Act 46, but I want to give an update on that. One thing that the SU Supervisor Union did at their last meeting, they agreed to double the size of the Act 46 Study Committee to include community members, one community member for each board member that's represented on that. So Shasberry has one board member on the Act 46 Study Committee, so they would get one community member. The process that they laid out is on the SVSU website, so if there's anybody listening at home, or anybody in the audience who thinks they might want to serve on the Act 46 Study Committee, there's an informational sheet on the SVSU website underneath School News, and a one-page application, really, two sides of it, very simple, fill out who you are, what town you live in, why you might want to serve. They come to the SU, then we will present them to all the individual board chairs, and at their joint, at their June meeting, then this board will vote on who you want your community representative on the Act 46 Study Committee to be. You might get one, you might get three, but we will have the applications for you, then the board will vote. It's not an appointment. If you remember, your representative, Jeff, you had to vote for that, so you, the recommendation from the SU and from the Vermont School Board Association and from the Act 46 consultant is that the board votes on it to give that person the authority to represent you as a community member. It says on the information sheet on the website, they anticipate that they'll start meeting towards the end of June. It could entail two meetings per month, and expect to dedicate two to four hours a month to that task. Some months it might be more, some a little less, but there's a lot of information to go through. And I'll let you give the rest of what we learned. I don't want to steal your thunder of what we learned at the meeting in Broward.
I'll do it now.
Or when, on your report, but that, that's my report.
Okay. Do you want to give it now? No. Okay. Got to think about it. All right, that's fine. Okay, we'll move on to financial, the Treasury's report. I did stop in at central office today, and where the 96 school bond is, there's been a, in fact, I'll read what the Treasurer had emailed me today. There was a miscommunication, has a amortization scheduled that indicates the next and final bond payment will be in November of 2016, which is $5,000. So there, there was a, like I said, it wasn't communicated properly, but that actually will be 5,000, and that should take care of that for this year. Oh, I need a motion on that.
To accept the Treasury.
Yeah, to accept the Treasury's report.
Motion to accept Treasury.
Jeff and Holly second it. Any other discussion?
Just for clarification, so this, this $15,000 is really five, and in November, it will be zero?
It's paid. We're debt-free.
Thank you.
But that doesn't mean we're going to spend all of that money either.
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. Number two, the People's United Bank, the change of signers, which I have there, that's just, there is an assistant to the Treasurer.
We have to go on that.
What, I thought we did?
Treasury report.
I'm sorry.
Second it.
Okay. All in favor of the Treasury's report?
I meant it.
I meant it. Thank you. Unanimous. God, I can't believe it. Yeah, sure. All right. Okay. So Jim, this here is just, I, I need a motion to sign, no, to accept the assistant, I guess a signer.
Yeah.
And that would be Abigail Sabalowski? I hope I pronounced that right. So, but I don't think it's, do I have to sign this?
Yeah.
I don't think so. So we just have to accept...
There's a signature line for you.
Is there? Okay, let me check. All right. Well, okay, we want to accept this. I'll find out exactly where the, where I sign it, because I don't want to put my signatures on your initials. Right. That's not my initials down here, so...
On the fourth page.
On the fourth page? All right.
And it has to be notarized.
Right.
So authorize the board, the chair...
Yeah, it is on the fourth page.
So you should, but don't do it, you can come to central office and do it in front of the notary.
Yeah, that's what I'll do. Okay, everybody?
Make a motion, redo that.
Okay. Motion with that, and second, Jeff? Yes.
I'm just going to vote no to this because I brought that to your attention, and we aren't sure if, if nothing to do with the signature, just with that conflict of interest. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Do we note it? All right.
Possible, possible. I haven't received word back from the Vermont Cities.
All right. What's that?
You have to vote no.
Oh, yeah, we still have to vote on it, though. So all in favor, there's a motion, that was Ed, you were second, so all in favor of the motion.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, and so it's three. Okay. Thank you. All right. We have the request for budget transfer. And let me get that. I got so many papers. Thank you. Yes. Where are my other papers? Okay, per request of the administration, following budget transfers require approval by the Shasberry School Board to cover new windows and materials for the west side of the primary wing, 15,000, and for a new 1,000-gallon dry well in the east parking lot, 6610. Any motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's Jeff, Ed seconded it, and discussion. Holly.
You know, I've had trouble with budget transfers because they, it's got trouble with any budget. But the $15,000 for the windows, I have no fawns about having that done, but I believe we have a bid process in, for $15,000. Have we, have we done that?
No, I, what I did...
And I understand what's...
Yeah, no, what I did, I had a meeting at central office, Jeff was there, superintendent, and we were talking about certain items, and we, Jay needed to get those windows ordered by a certain day, otherwise they weren't going to get done, so I, I gave him permission to do that. So that's, that's on me.
We need the windows.
It won't be 15,000.
Right, it's, the windows, I think, are 11,000, Jay?
10 something.
10, okay, so let's say 11,000 for the sake of argument.
Materials, too?
And the materials are five?
That's just the windows.
Yeah.
The full project is 15,000, if I'm, or very close to it, correct?
That's what we budgeted for.
I, I have no doubt, we did budget.
Yeah.
That's all we have to say.
Is that so? Okay. And anybody else?
So we, that was my question, was, have we, there's money in the next year, the next year's budget for the windows, is that right?
We put it in reserve. Yeah.
In the, in the, sorry, I didn't hear, Jay's, we can't, if we wait till July 1st, Jay can't start it till July 1st.
Okay.
We've got three weeks of June, since we're getting out so early.
Right.
Jay can start that project much earlier than July.
So this is money that we put in...
Fuel savings money, right?
Yeah, yeah. From fuel savings. But it is money that we budgeted for next year that we won't be using, so...
Anyone else?
And repair and maintenance is for the DI, the drainage of that. Yeah.
We want to exact that before we pay you for that settlement.
Okay.
I just need a clar, we just said we budgeted for this, but we're pulling this out of the fuel budget?
Mm-hmm. So you won't spend your next year's budget without that money in reserve.
I asked Mary Buak about that, because I didn't want to take it out of the fuel line item, and she says it won't, it won't matter, said it'll still, you can do that, it's not going to hurt you, so. I said, okay, then I'll do that. I checked, that day I was over there talking with the superintendent, so...
So we, just to clarify, we budgeted for next fiscal year for these, and now we're going to be spending them on this fiscal year, but we have to transfer in order to do that.
Right, right. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll...
Don't you, if you got a question?
Well, savings in the budget, I get that we had a mild winter. Shouldn't that go back to the budget to give the, the value for investment?
Well, it's the same amount of money that's going to, if you make sure you don't, you take that earmarking next year's budget, and you roll that over at the end of the year, you're going to do the same thing. Because this money in the fuel account wouldn't go into next year's budget anyways, it would be FY '18 that it would roll into your fund balance account. So by doing, buying the window, the real reason you're doing it now is so that you can start the work now and not have to wait till when the money's available in your July, after July 1 in that budget. So you'll pick up a few weeks to get the job done. Yeah, but you'll have, the net effect is going to be the, you're going to have $15,000, you're not going to take it out of this year's budget, you'll have it in next year's budget. Just be cautious that you don't spend it twice.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion? And abstain, or no? One no. Okay. Okay, next we go to the consent agenda. We have the minutes. Holly, you want to do these separate?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so I need a, a motion on the minutes?
First.
Okay, and a second? Ed, okay? Thank you. Okay, go ahead, questions? Holly, you ready?
They're good.
Oh, okay. All right.
Richard does a great job.
Just a quick question, the February minutes, do we have to change those later?
Well, we have to change the minutes, these minutes will reflect that we acknowledged that we-
The changes.
Right, because we didn't, the minutes reflect actively what we gave as a reason of why we went to executive session.
That's just getting that right. Okay.
All right. Fran, you could give your statement, I don't know if Richard got what your statement was.
Oh, I'll give him, you do that, okay. All right, I'll give him that. Okay, anything on the warrants?
Well, are we going to vote on the minutes, the approval?
Yeah. All in favor of those minutes? Okay. Unanimous, okay. Next, consent agenda. I had one, there's on warrant, number 2012, page 7, it's 399 for a table saw. That is for? Okay. Did we have one before, or no? Oh, yours.
What was it for?
Well, you did, still keep, the table saw. To use for the windows, for maintenance, for here, and to do the windows. He used his own last time, for that. Okay. And, check number, and the same warrant, 2012, check number 21507, page A is for 5832, but there's no receipt with that. I think that's just teachers, whatever, teacher box.
Yeah, I'm not sure, he's, Justin's been doing a good job of getting those in there, I'm not sure why that one wasn't, why the details were put in there.
Yeah.
The other ones seem to have details in it.
And I hope I know the, the answer to the next one. 2012, page 10, the $490, is that for the playground out here with those holes?
Yes.
Because I think we said it would be something like $5,500 to repair that?
That was for the broken pipe.
Yeah, that was the one broken pipe, we had the hole.
Okay, so that's what it costs us, is the $490? Oh, so you're not going to be looking for $5,000, $6,000 then?
Well, the $5,000, $6,000 was to recreate that field that wasn't to replace the pipe.
Okay.
This was when we noticed the hole, there was a-
So will we have to still do that? Recreate that?
I've got three bids for you to look at.
Oh, okay. All right. I was hoping the other way, but that's fine.
No, no, you're hoping that was going to fix the-
Oh, yeah.
No, we're talking about recreating the field, I hadn't, that wasn't about the-
All right. Okay, anybody else on the warrants?
I don't know if I did, I was going to leave them alone, but I will.
Okay.
Um, there was a program in here, I was wondering what it was, Wakey-Boy or Wacky?
Wacky.
What, what is that?
Those are computer components that kids are going to be able to use in the classroom to learn about coding, and computer invention, and experimentation, and-
So it's science-based?
Yes.
Sort of?
Well, it could be used in a number of ways, but technology and science, yes. There's a number of items in this month's warrants around that.
And the other thing, was on page, sorry, I didn't give you the pa, it was on, you might just know, it's a special order item for the air handler room for the new technology equipment, coming this year for upgrading equipment. It's a very small item, but I was just wondering what we are doing.
It's on page 10. It's on page 6.
Anything else?
Yeah, same, I had a question on the same warrant, on page 9, there's a check for about $900, and the description is just Raspberry BL.
That's, that's another technology piece. That's a little circuit board that you build kits from.
Yep.
Or it'd be a very expensive Raspberry TART.
Anybody else? Anything else? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor of the consent agenda? Okay? No? Or abstain?
No, and the reason is why, there's things that we just okayed when we haven't even discussed them further in the meeting, but I vote no.
Okay. Okay. Okay, next, we're getting into the policies. The first one is policy number 5200, it's a fundraising policy, and it is for warning. So I need a motion? That's Jeff, Ed seconded. Okay, discussion.
Do we have a member of the policy committee on the board to say anything about this?
Uh, we did not, uh, it's going to be approved again, following, they didn't say approve. They didn't have any questions.
I'm the SVSU, but I thought, it's his, this is his role. But the fundraising policy, we added, all fundraising activities will comply with federal, state, and local laws and regulations. They made reference to the activity accounts, which closely hooked to these, and I'm not quite sure why this new one didn't have the procedures, unless maybe something is going to change. They're very clear, but that's-
Leon's still carrying that, so, just usually he has, he's always about administrative rights and all that stuff, so.
Yep.
Well, anyways, this is, like I said, this is just for warning anyway, so. What they did is, they did bring up, uh, the fundraiser for the food sale at collection day. Oh, okay, yeah. And hopefully, it was a teaching moment for the kids, because they have to be 25 feet away from the door, and they had to move, because they got too close. Okay.
Fran?
Yes?
So, it appears that the policy committee decided to take a look at the existing policy, and didn't have any substantive changes, they're just adding some, well, a reference to the-
Right.
2013 standards, and then sort of a catch-all line that the activities will be consistent with the law.
Yep.
So, and this just came into our packets, and we're just seeing it for the first time, essentially, tonight. We've talked about fundraising a couple of times, it's been brought up in public comment, and we've had some informal discussion at the board level. I guess, I was just a little bit dismayed, really, by the first statement here, this is, there are two statements, and the first one is, "The boards recognize that fundraising is important to the overall success and quality of co-curricular offerings." So, I'm not sure that I, as an individual board member, would agree with that statement, that I recognize that it is fundamental, or that it's important to the success. I'm not sure what is meant by co-curricular offerings, or that fundraising is, is important to them. This is a 2001 policy, it's 15 years old, the landscape has changed, I think, quite a bit in the 15 years, and the type of fundraising that goes on incessantly at the elementary school level is not, in my mind, consistent with the overall learning objectives of the school, or any school. So, I would just say, before, before I'm willing to approve this without any changes, that we have encouraged the policy committee to have a discussion about what this really means, and I'm happy to hear what you have to say, Jim or Jeff, too, on that subject.
There's your man, or, either or, right there, to give them your concerns, and they'll bring it to the next policy meeting.
Well, we didn't really get into that, where Ed wasn't sitting on the board, but, it all hooks to, um, the teacher-
I'm going to read it again this month.
Not this month, next month. Um, with fundraisers for the, it's to alleviate, there's people that want to, that are in events, sports events, music events, school events, that want, you know, want to give their child the opportunity to, this policy builds that in. It's supposed to be a teachable moment, it's supposed to be, I'm sure, that our teachers are on top of the children, and watching over and care, but it's to, in my opinion, it takes away from the burden of all, for some, that are, you know, that are in the, in something they need to fundraise for.
Okay, well, we can approve the warning, obviously, but before it gets approved, hopefully everybody will have their questions answered, and some of the, everybody's, you know, invited to go to those policy meetings, so.
I just told Dave if he wasn't there-
I probably can't make it, so I will-
Just give your concerns, so they can talk for you.
There's two of us here, you can, we want to do two.
But I'm going to just, Fran, I'm sorry, I'm going to read the second one, too, because I find it equally unsettling.
Go ahead.
"The boards are aware of the educational and social value that can accrue to students as a result of participating in fundraising activities, including but not limited to work readiness, goal-setting, and achievement." And all of it, sounds like it might have been true in the 50s, but I'm not so sure that any of it is consistent with what we actually do for fundraising, and the-
It's not part of the personalized learning plan. So personalized learning.
That, Dave, that is from Vermont Framework, which standard our learning.
And who came up with those?
They did it up north. Part of Vermont model policy. Okay. You want to take these separate, or all at once? Well, actually, no, we got to do it separate, never mind. Yeah, let's, let's, all right, all in favor of the warning, policy number 5200. Dave, abstain?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay, unopposed. All right, next, policy number 4261, it's substitute teachers, and this is for adoption. So I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Jeff made the motion, Ed seconded. Okay, discussion. If no discussion, all in favor of the motion? Okay? Unanimous? Okay. Next one, policy number 5145, condom availability. This is mainly SU.
MAU.
MAU, excuse me.
We could give them out at central office, too, but I don't know how that would go over.
Okay, need a motion?
Motion to adapt.
Dave, and second? Jeff? Okay, discussion. Hearing none? No, go ahead.
I just, I just will say again, to our Shastberry School, that this doesn't apply to us, but be aware that in the upper grades, parental notification is not going to be needed. Just, just a-
Yeah.
Fair warning.
Okay, all in-
Sorry, can you say that again? I think you answered the question wrong.
They have a, this policy does not require parental permission. I just want Shastberry community, it doesn't affect our little guys, but as your children go up to the upper grades-
May affect the little guys.
May, you're right.
Right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of this policy? Okay? And one no, correct?
Oh, I forgot to vote.
Okay. I voted for him.
I have, I, no, I-
Okay.
Unanimous?
Yes, I forgot, I, I can't do anything about it.
Okay, we're going to move right into the facilities. Jeff?
So Jim Seacort came and wrote up a invitation for bids for the project we planned on this summer, that was put together by central office, it's been put out. The plan is to open the bids on May 18th, and possibly award the bid on May 25th, unless you all want to have a special meeting to look at the bids, we can, we can give the board chair authorization to approve the lowest responsible response, responsive proposal, that's according to central office, how it should be awarded, for that project.
Okay.
So on May 18th, Fran could be present when they open them, and Fran could be the one chosen by the board to pick the most responsible proposal for that project.
Your pleasure?
I just have one question.
Yes.
Seven days, we, it's only a seven-day window of time for people to be interested in the project?
No, no, May 18th is when they're open.
To May 25th?
They're out there now.
Oh, okay. Thank you, thank you.
And 25th is when it can be awarded. And again, if that's awarded on the 25th, again, they can get started in June, when school's out.
So you need a motion, right?
Yes.
All right, somebody?
Fran, chair.
Yeah, the chair, dude.
I'll make the motion. Ed seconded. Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Just, just, no. Do we have, can you remind us of ballpark what we've anticipated?
We budgeted about $80,000.
$80,000. Can we count on Fran not to approve the lowest bid if it happens to be well over that?
We'd want to bring that back to the whole board.
Yeah. We need to meet over there the day we open our bid, that's up here.
No, I'm happy to have you do it, but, and I'm sure you would be, you're pushing it that way.
Listen, I'm probably the cheapest guy sitting at this table, so, I mean, I, I'll make sure that money will spend. Don't put that in minutes.
I will say, Jim Seacort said it's probably going to be over the $180,000 in what he's proposed.
A lot of that reason is they had to do a test bowl on the roof, and it didn't pass, so they got to plywood the whole roof, because Firestone needs a two-foot anchor for the insulation before they can glue the rubber roof, and it didn't pass, so, it's going to add a lot, because they got to put 5/8 plywood over the whole roof. They just can't go over, they're going to go over, but they're not tearing, but they got to plywood it.
You said you can, you could do, what day is the 18th?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? So next Wednesday, so you, is there a time for the opening?
3:00.
3:00? You could want a special meeting at central office for 3:00?
Okay. Would you feel more comfortable with that? Go ahead.
We have another board meeting before that date, correct?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Oh, that's right, man, I'm thinking June.
Our next Shastberry would be June, so.
So.
If you feel more comfortable, we can set it, we can warrant something for 3:00 at central office. If that's, I think we ought to have it on, another meeting for-
All right.
Yeah, I think we ought to have, if the bid goes over, then-
But they can't award it on 25th, is it?
Yeah, 25th is what the award date is.
So, you don't have to actually do it on the 18th, you have up until the 25th to meet and decide. So you could open it on the 18th, and if you're panicked by what it is, you could call a meeting before the 25th.
It says honor before the 25th. So at any point after the 18th, you guys go.
I think I feel more comfortable having everybody there, and then you have questions or concerns, let's do it then.
Yeah, we don't have to be there for the opening, I don't think.
No, no, but I'll look at it if I have some real concerns, and we're all going to have some skin in the game.
Yep.
Okay.
Could we just have a, I'm hearing new things, a new, new something, or, I'm not a builder, you might be more, but can we have a snapshot of what we're talking about?
Well, I'll do it, Jay can help me out if I, if I need it. What it's been told to me is, they're going to leave the roof that's on there, on there. But I'm just hearing now, they have to cover that all with plywood, I don't know, 5/8, okay, 5/8 plywood. So we all know how expensive that stuff is, and then you're going to make a box, kind of, a box perimeter around the whole roof, and then you're going to put the new roof on top of that. Is that still going to be a membrane roof? It is going to-
It's over us now.
Okay, all right, good, okay. So that's basically in a nutshell, unless you-
I've got the whole document on my desk.
Okay, all right. So that's what we're getting into.
Unless you don't know anything about membranes, or we-
Jay, why do they want, why do they want to go over, they trying to limit exposure to the elements, is that why they're going over the existing roof?
They need some passive, it's dry under there, and we don't have to add another eight inches of insulation, it's all dry, they just figure they just go over that and save money.
Save money that way.
And it'll save a lot on disposal.
On disposal, yeah.
The chimney's involved in that, coming down.
Okay, the chimney is, is part of that, okay.
And they, we put money in the budget to have that removed.
Right, right. Okay. Anything else? Any other discussion? Okay, so, you still want me to open the bid, and so I need a vote on that. All in favor of that? Okay? Unanimous?
Just to open the bid?
Yes. And accept it if it's under- Right. Well, if, I got a feeling I still want all you people involved, so, I think, I'd feel more comfortable, but anyway, okay, so that's unanimous.
When is just, when's the opening?
18.
Next one?
Yeah, next Wednesday?
Week from today?
And we have seven days.
Yeah, so you got seven days.
So, so the motion is just to authorize you to open the bid?
Or sign it if it is-
Accept it.
Sign it.
Accept it if it's under the bid. And accept it if it's under the 108.
That's correct, yeah. Yep.
These are the three quotes we got for the field they were just talking about, we were to regrade the field. Jay tried to get two or three more, but they just didn't give us a bid, so those are the three that we have, if the board is interested. Yeah, the board's interested in that project this summer, and that was basically like we Yeah, quotes. If the board's interested in that project this summer, and that would basically, like we talked about before, if you look at our field now, it's just a bunch of bridges and dips and hills, and this would level that out, can do seed, make it a little safer for our kids. That's just for information, if the board wants to explore that later in the summer.
Okay. That's nothing we have to act on now, so that's, okay. All right. Personnel, posting of the custodial position.
I'd like to post it. I just need, I need direction from the board as how they want it posted, what they.
I had talked with HR, Mr. McKernan, it is going to be a part-time position. He probably didn't give you anything, Jim, as far as that, but I know he was gonna make it, I guess, yeah, we need to post it. So I would assume, you need a motion from this board?
Yes.
To post the custodial position?
I believe it was gonna be 25 hours with allowable over for the direction of the principal.
Right, right. All right, so Holly, let me get the motion and second, first, then we'll have discussion. Jeff, motion, Ed seconded, okay, now discussion, go ahead, Holly.
I thought last meeting we were going to be brought some information before, to discuss this further. I won't, I'm one upon four, who is not after the custodian or. We don't, we have 13 hours through a company that, I heard all the, the safety, the flexibility, the hours needed, the duties. Are we comfortable just going ahead and posting this position?
Well, we have to have a position. I think it was, I'm gonna say it was a consensus that we weren't gonna use Janatronics, so, and I brought forth that I wanted it part-time. And.
I had asked for some, then I had asked for some information, so I would just say, I will just.
No, that's okay.
This is a board decision.
Yep.
I can, I will just vote no, and that's the reason why.
Any other discussions?
The other thing that I had on the timing is that, do we want to still use the custodians as crossing guards? Or do you want to hire some local person to be a crossing guard for twice a day?
Uh, we haven't had that conversation, although Jay has been doing.
Jay's been doing it in the morning.
Right, right, and then Gary was doing it in the afternoon, yeah. I don't know.
I'm just thinking that you're, you're paying your top dollar for crossing guards.
I think that's something we can explore, I don't.
What's your part-time position?
I mean, they only said 25. And I figured at that point, you better not put them out for crossing guards, you better not put them out, but that's.
45 minutes a day.
Yep.
Yeah.
My problem is we can't get it down to 30.
Mm-hmm.
But it is, it was in there at 25, but it quit.
45 minutes, that's.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I want to take part of that thing and get a crossing guard in there.
Um.
I.
Yeah.
13 hours, three people, three people, but we need. We have, we have an eight-hour position and we have a five-hour position, that's 13 hours.
But there'd be a lap at the end of the day, so something happened during 2:00 in the afternoon after Jay leaves.
Well, that's.
Do we shut down the bathroom if a kid throws up in there for safety reasons?
Well, that's, I, I heard those concerns.
If you had a 13 hours, if you had a 10, you'd have eight hours for getting.
I'm, I'm, heard the community, I've come away from Janatronics. We have a position, and we were given a clear indication of all the duties that are done with what we have, that you wanted to put onto Janatronics. We don't wanna, we wanna just move forward and put the position. I feel that there, you know, we have 13 hours, it's, we're not to run the school, but.
Do we want to discuss, then, a separate person to do? We, we had this, we had the crossing, we had this before, we had it for years. What's, what's the board's pleasure?
I mean, part of me, I think Janatronics would be a better job, clean more in the afternoon, I gotta say that, you know, from a point, but to have that last in the afternoon if something did happen, it's the safety piece, you know, the health safety piece, where if there's nobody cleaning a bathroom, you have to close a bathroom. And could you afford to close a bathroom for two hours in the day? Has to be a no for me. So I mean, that's why I think a local person, in-house, would be nicer, 'cause then there's a smooth transition between the day, Jay, and the secondary person.
I suggest you move on the 25-hour seat.
Right.
Make a motion, see if that passes or doesn't, and then the separate would be whether you want to explore, have the principal explore what the cost of a crossing guard would do and how that would affect the budget, and then you could make that motion at the next meeting.
Let's do that. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But, but Janatronics, if we have them in the evening, you have to think that people do use the building, want to use the building. We will not have any coverage to allow anybody to then be able to use the building.
What Jay's saying is he doesn't have enough time at 30, 25, Janatronics, do in that timeframe, which is, they're efficient?
They're gonna double, or triple.
The triple, triple the cleaning. You know, is it, you know, if you have to look at cost, they're cost efficient. If it has, I guess, you know, for us, for flexibility as a community, as a building, you know, they're not as flexible. They can come in, do their job, get out, which is.
I believe, I believe with our discussion with HR, though, is if the 25-hour position, I'll have, I'll have the flexibility to say, today, today you're gonna need to stay an extra hour or so, because we have an event going on, and I need you to stay till 7:30, 8:00.
Which is.
They can't average, I think it's 30 hours.
They can't average 30 over the course of a year.
Of course, you're. Breaking my own thing that I said, that a couple of comments are disclosed, but I'll take one last one.
I have a question.
Go ahead, one last one.
Didn't the Janatronics people say they wouldn't be here when students were in the building? So if you're having a function with students in the building, are they gonna be saying, oh, well, we're not gonna be here for these hours, because you're having a school dance, or you're having this meeting, or you're having that meeting, so like, then what? When does it get cleaned if you're constantly having people in the building, or you have an after-school activity that goes until 5:00?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get into it.
And they don't.
We're not gonna go with Janatronics, so that's, that's, no, Holly?
Well, because I, I probably caused this commotion.
No.
I heard the people in the commune, of the community, for safety. I heard the need for mishaps during the day. I heard the flexibility after school, because we're doing great after-school functions. I sit here as a board member, and I, to focus on two things. Safety and well-being of children, inadequate yearly progress, and value for investment. We have eight hours a day, and we, well, eight, 'cause I found this old school board document, I won't get into it today, but crossing guards are paid hourly. I'm just saying, if you're going to move forward, I'm willing to, to vote for you to go forward with the eight hours and the five hours.
Well, we've said.
I think that is the proposal.
That's the proposal.
Eight hours and five hours, and your discretion to fill all those needs and all the duties.
Okay.
That, year-round.
We budgeted this, this position at six hours, plus.
It is here, eight.
I'm pretty sure that, yeah.
Plus benefits?
No benefits.
We didn't budget benefits? Yeah, in the case of the time, yeah. Yeah, okay. We noticed you retired when you were. Okay. Anyway, so, so this is budgeted at five hours, and it's less than six, okay.
Flexible, flexible hours.
Actually, they're bigger than this school.
Not the elementary?
Yeah, I've been through Fisher.
Said it felt the same size, I talked about it yesterday.
I, I went up there before we did our additions here, their rooms are a lot bigger, and, but anyway.
They've got an eight-hour guy, he has an eight-hour guy and four subs if needed.
Right, okay. All right, let's, 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 all right, the motion on the table is to approve part-time position, 25 hours. Let's do that, we'll look into the crossing guard part. All in favor, all in favor of that motion?
No, I got.
Go ahead.
I'd like to amend that to say 28 hours.
Well, I, I think we have it at 25 with the discretion to go 30 hours, if my.
I think, I think I'd, I think I'd rather have a set time, rather than give a discretion each week. I think 25 is too low.
The HR department recommended the 25, 'cause they say if you went to 28 or 29, it would, it would look like you're trying to subvert the health insurance laws, insurance. So that, so that's, their recommendation was do it 25 hours and authorize the principal that he could authorize an additional five hours per week, as long as the person does not average more than 30 hours per week over the course of the year. That was the recommendation of the HR director.
Jeff, what do you think about that?
I, I need people here to do the job. I have the discretion to keep somebody here, especially those after-hour events.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that, we have, I have that discretion, and according to HR, I will have that, as long as they don't average 30 hours a week for a year.
As long as whoever you hire understands, as long as whoever you hire understands that, they, they may have to work extra hours.
Yeah, so that will be part of the conversation.
And to be part of the weekly schedule, if the building use schedule comes out.
Yeah, yeah. Jay, last, last question.
Takes an hour to do garbage, takes three hours to vacuum, it leaves you an hour to do all your tile and all your bathrooms. So Jeff and I would have to sit down and make up a schedule of what that person would do every other night, 'cause there's no way five hours is gonna do it.
No.
Six hours isn't doing it.
That's why we're gonna ask you to have that extra five hours.
I, I got, I think we can make it work, let's, let's see what happens.
So the motion is what?
Well, wait a minute. I believe the.
The motion, motion is 25, and I.
25.
I put amendment in 28.
28.
You did not get seconded.
Right, we're gonna, I think we're gonna do, the motion's gonna be, we're gonna do the 25 hours with the principal.
You gotta ask for a second to start.
Well.
'Cause he made a, he made an amendment, so you gotta ask for a second for his amendment.
Okay.
He'll be seconded, then that's fine.
Okay, is there a second?
Second amendment.
Okay. Now, I, do I need another motion, a second, I'm lost here.
I, I'd like a motion to.
The motion, the motion right now on the floor is 28.
Allow me to post the position tomorrow, so.
Thank you, that's what I want to get.
25 hours.
We're gonna vote the amendment. Yeah.
For 28 hours, vote the amendment for 28 hours, and if that passes, then that's what we post for. If it doesn't pass, then you go back to the original motion.
All in favor of that motion? Dies, okay. Next motion. 25, I'll make the motion.
No, you shouldn't be making.
Somebody come in.
It's already been made, it's already out there.
Okay.
That motion's already out. 25 hours.
The 25 hours.
Yep.
The motion is for 25 hours that we're gonna vote on now?
Yes.
Plus, plus the ability to use.
Okay.
Plus discretion.
Plus discretion, okay.
All in favor of that motion? No, right, okay. All right. Principals report.
Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, I wanted, it's on the agenda, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. So we, we had a number of events and activities for our teachers. We had Sue come in for three days, do 10-minute massages for our teachers during the break. We had a luncheon for them, and we also had a gift for them, all sponsored by our PTO, our active PTO, for that matter. I just want to say, I just want to say, there's a number of staff here that, that came in tonight, I want to thank them for all they do, that it's not just that one week that we appreciate them, it's all year long. And it was a nice week, and I hope they felt appreciated. I want to thank Sue Green in the band and chorus, they had their concert la, Monday, it was Monday, I'm sorry, Monday night. This was the largest, I think Sue said this is the largest chorus she's ever had, it's close to 100 students, team chorus and band, which is close to half our school, but some would do both. This kid sounded great, I think the more kids that were in the chorus, the better it sounded, but they did a concert for the school at 1:15, and they also did an evening concert for parents, that went off very well. Big Truck Night is slated for next Friday, May 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30. It's an annual event, it's attended, well-attended by a number of families and communities from around the area, not just Shasbury, last year was a big, we had from Arlington and Bennington. If anybody would like to come and help volunteer, we appreciate any volunteers. There's a number of games we have, Big Truck's coming, and like I said, from 5:30 to 7:30, encourage board members to come and have a good time. And finally, our S-Back testing window will be the last week in May. Our teachers will be giving that to the students the last week in May, and report out for results won't be until they're, they'll be embargoed, so once the state releases them, I'll be able to report out the results for those.
Okay.
One more thing, Fran?
Yep. What is it?
5:30 to 7:30. This is a reminder, more for Fran, I'm not sure, but you guys at last meeting approved the Mount Pelear trip funding for the bus?
Yes.
We, the PO's closing at the end of the week. You guys approved it, so I'm putting that on you, Fran, if you can find money somewhere, or.
You better start fundraising real quick. No, I, no, I know, we'll find it.
You approved that, so they didn't have to fundraise for it, so.
No, I know.
I need you to go to Central and have some money.
I will do that tomorrow.
I know there's money there, if it's available, but.
I will do that tomorrow.
You guys did approve it last month, and they did go on the trip last, last week.
So there was an invoice for that bus?
Not yet, 'cause they just went on the trip, which should be coming really soon.
Their motion was to pay the invoice, not, not a dollar amount.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's right.
We did get the invoice?
I've already, yes, 'cause I've already paid it.
Okay. Out of our field trip line?
Yes.
So we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to refund that, 'cause we've got other trips that we need to pay by then.
And it came out of what, where'd you pay that?
I paid it out of the sixth grade account.
Okay.
So we reverse the sixth grade account then.
All right.
So just. So, yeah, okay.
It had to be paid.
So, those are the type of things that we get dinged on in our audit every year.
He needed to check that day.
He could've waited.
Or he could've invoiced, he should've invoiced the SU, and then he could've paid it, processed it like a purchase right.
Anything else, Jeff?
No.
Okay, all right, chairs report, I've already done most of that up here, so we're going in for the executive session for the principal evaluation, and I don't think I, well, I'll read the whole thing, because if somebody's watching. Executive session, if, based on 1 VSA, Section 313A, 34, evaluation of a public employee. So I want to make sure, we'll start.
And you'll take no, you're gonna.
No action.
Be adjourned.
Right, no action. It's been a couple nights. Any other? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Most of you going to.
You're gonna have some drinks tomorrow. Okay. Yeah, need a motion to an executive session. Jeff made it, Ed seconded it. All in favor, aye, okay. That's one.